A Ben and Franck transit meeting. And so I, I don't actually have the, the information in front of me. I don't know if it'd be possible to do a screen share or something to that effect. Um, I'm waiting for my wife to come drop this off by my office.
Yeah, we can do, we can do a screen share and we'll try to see if we can't focus them in on the two right columns. That, that way you're not, you all have a little bit bigger, uh, text to read online. And it'll help our folks that may not have a hard copy in front of them as well too, so. Okay, so the first, you're welcome. My apologies, any other council comments? Okay, so my, our, our first goal and just starting under the quality of life header. It has to do with, uh, use of, uh, community development block grant in other public and private capital, uh, for revitalization of older neighborhoods. That was our old goal. Uh, we've been able to do some of that. Uh, we used a big chunk of our CBDG money for downtown. And, uh, you know, you'll see that, uh, flesh out, uh, in the investment of farmer's market and, um, peanuts park update. Uh, one of the comments, uh, one of the discussions that we had, I think, in, um, at the retreat, and we've, we've certainly had it before, is not only just the neighborhoods, but the routes where those neighborhoods, those routes those neighborhood utilized to, uh, access, uh, essential services. You know, maybe it's a sidewalk or, uh, a crosswalk or traffic light facility or something that gets them to, uh, a portion of town near their neighborhood that may not be specifically in the neighborhood, but may help them, uh, be able to get to essential facilities. And so the recommendation that we're proposing there is, uh, just to simply add that, uh, just we put some thought into safe routes to essential services, whether that's a school or doctors, hospital groceries, or, or whatever that might be. And I, I think I will just kind of walk through them. And if there's, if there's any comments by council, just, let's just bring them up, uh, right away. And then, you know, we can, we can mark those and maybe those are ones that we talk about at, uh, at our workshop if we, if we need to go to workshop. Or we might be able to resolve them tonight. Okay, so the second goal on that?
So, sorry, before we, before we continue on, um, just real quick, um, Dave, I believe the funding for the, um, farmer's market, that, that the capital investment there, that's going to be paid annually out of the, out of our CDBG allotment. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. Not, not all of it, about, about half of it.
Yeah. Okay, so I was curious how much we have that isn't already obligated to ongoing, um, um, specific needs. Um, I guess I'm just wondering if there's enough money here to have this be highlighted. Um, or is, are we, uh, we're, we're pretty, are we getting pretty thin on the money left?
No, I, I think there's, there's dollars to, that you can make an impactful improvement in a neighborhood. I mean, there, there's not enough to, you know, go improve neighborhoods left and right. But, uh, yeah, you, you can have an impactful project in your biennium.
Thank you.
Okay, second one, uh, had to do with, um, a community center and a community park and the acquisition of both, or development of one, acquisition of the other. And, uh, community park piece is a pretty long range thing. This is just acquisition of the property, not necessarily the development of it. And, um, the proposal is, uh, to continue our efforts to conduct outreach designed towards citing and programming needs. Uh, and to pursue acquisition of land for, and that, that's just a clarification of some language, but pursue acquisition of land for future community park. Uh, I, I throw out there citing and programming needs, uh, based on conversation we've had with council, uh, recently, as, including during the retreat. Uh, really wanted to get a handle on what we, what we're going to put in there and where, where the location of this, the process by which the location is going to be determined. This kind of does tie into, uh, where's that goal at? Angelo, was that down with the?
Second from the bottom, I think.
Yeah, second from the bottom, yeah. Is, um, updating, uh, parks and facilities comp plan, uh, to include park, public facilities, inventory, needs assessment, level of service, and centers evaluation. I didn't want to take it out necessarily because we've had this as a specific goal for at least two or three cycles now with the, with the, um, uh, community centerpiece and the, and the community park. And it's, it's kind of a, it is sort of a separate, both of them are core support, sort of separate projects. And they're, they're significant enough that they're, they're more than just, they, they are transformative. Uh, so I, 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 I didn't, I felt that we might lose them if we just try to incorporate it into that bigger process. But I think the two need to happen simultaneously. I, I think one needs to be a part of the other one. So that's my suggestion. Go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Zabel, this is Councilman Milley. Hey, uh, before the whole COVID, we had talked about having a facilitating a meeting with the Pasco School District with their third high school and seeing if the community center could be somewhere on the property, like next to the high school, so that students could use it, like the art classrooms, woodshop classrooms, and then in the evening, uh, community could use that. Uh, I know COVID really screwed up things, but were you ever able to have a meeting with the Pasco School District on this issue?
We, we did, we were able to have a discussion with the superintendent about the potential to, you know, to evaluate shared facilities. But that's really all, it, all it really started out was a discussion. So that's, that's something that I, I could see us further exploring as we're looking, as we're doing this assessment.
Okay, I just know that, you know, money's going to be tight and more as a community, we can work together and share the same parking lot and the same facility. To me, it makes sense, but, uh, just throwing that out there is, so, thank you.
Yeah, I would throw out there that, uh, you know, a few years ago, uh, we'd had some initial discussions with, uh, the library district as well about the potential for a, for a shared facility. So there, well, there are some potential partners out there that we, we want to have some conversations with. And I would agree, the more we could stretch our dollars and the more they can stretch their dollars, the better it is for everyone.
Well.
So this is Toronto. Um, first, I'm going to say my webcam for some reason is not working, so that's why you're not going to see me, uh, which I know disappoints most of you, if not all. But, uh, second, I, I think that, I appreciate that this is narrow, but I think we need to expand beyond just conducting outreach, right? We're going to expend funds to create an entire plan. And, and so I think, you know, outreach and, you know, dedicate resources towards achieving these goals, um, you know, to complete the studies. So I, I guess that's where I think a hybrid of this and then not rolling it into the other one completely, for me, would be ideal. Because once we conduct the outreach, this goal's achieved, um, and phasing it in appropriately with the planning, I think is what the real meat of it is. Which means that then we would allocate funds towards it and those types of things. So I would just, in my opinion, I think it needs to be, uh, taken another step.
And in addition, um, if I may, I mean, you have needs in there twice.
I, I did notice that.
Yes, just the grammar.
Thank you.
But, um, okay. But yeah, I would, I would agree with, with Toronto.
To which, uh, what, what is the other goal that we're comparing to? What, that, that seems synonymous with this one?
Uh, it is in that same section. So it's the second to the last goal is basically updating, which is a new goal. Updating, uh, the parks and facilities comprehensive plan to include public facilities, inventory, uh, needs assessment, level of service, which we had a discussion on that, and centers evaluation, which we had, we had discussions on, uh, community centers as well as, uh, potential, uh, center for the arts.
You said second from the bottom, Dave?
Second for the bottom in this section.
In the quality of life section?
In the quality of life section. Yep.
It's on the second physical printed page.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I'll agree with Pete that, uh, making sure that we're, we're, we're action oriented in a way that's measurable would be, would be nice on this. And I'm not sure how to, how exactly to word that right, uh, whether it needs to be, um, making this one a little wordier, but more, um, more, more specific. I don't know if that made, I'm not sure if that made sense. Um, but there, there could be some value out of that.
We can do that.
And no, and no, I don't have any words in mind, sorry.
Well, basically, it's just, I think essentially it's conducting the effort to do this. More than just outreach, just getting it done and getting us to a decision point. So we'll, we'll wordsmith that and have some suggestions for you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that captures exactly what I was trying to get at.
Okay. Uh, next one has to do initially with additional soccer and sports fields. Uh, the revised goal is simply just, um, acknowledges development of phase A. And that's probably more to let folks know that here's a tangible thing that's happening within the biennium. But, you know, should be happening, well, starting probably with the next few months, so. Uh, the next goal has to do with, um, the Pasco Public Facilities District. Uh, without going into a whole lot, you know, we, we all kind of recognize what's happened and how COVID, uh, impacted, uh, the ability to conduct a campaign and, and really kind of didn't make sense to put it on the ballot for this year. But it would be a continuation of that effort. Uh, I, I did modify the language a little bit, uh, just for clarity's sake, but I think the intent is, is the same.
Uh, Dave, I, I do think this one might be a little bit, um, too narrow. Uh, the ballot measure is important and something that the PFD will be putting together. And I'm sure, you know, obviously CD resource, resource will help them, um, prepare the objective language to that. But there's also, um, an informational portion of this. Um, just make sure that the facts are prepared and ready as questions are asked about, um, you know, what is the impact of this long term? How is it financially viable, et cetera, et cetera? There's a, there's more than just the ballot measure, um, that will need to be done overall.
Okay, that's a great point.
Excuse me.
Miss, you're not online.
Yep, thank you, sorry. So at this point, um, is the regional public facilities district going to be involved at all at this point? Should we, should we keep?
Oh, see, yeah, I think, do you see the, the old goal had regional, right?
Yeah, I think we just need to focus on Pasco.
Yep.
Because, uh, you know, there's even a discussion whether the regional public facility district is going to, going to be operating. I know, I know we're, we're kind of in hold right now, but, um, it just all depends on what the other cities are going to do. There's just too much. And I think, uh, just focusing it on the Pasco Public Facilities District and putting our energy with them would be, uh, more appropriate, I think. What do you think, Craig?
Absolutely, great catch.
Yep. Okay. So I have information, public outreach, and financial analysis. Okay, next, uh, next item just recognizes, uh, uh, completion of construction new animal control facility. Hopefully we'll beat a bid here very shortly. We're just waiting for, we'll be meeting with the other two cities. Matter of fact, I had contact with, uh, the two city managers there today. We'll be updating their councils in October, so first and second week in October. I did not see, uh, and the following one about ongoing efforts to improve efficiency and effectiveness. Certainly you can see some, um, demonstrations where that's occurred, uh, over the, over the, um, uh, reporting period, but, uh, that seemed like a still, still a pretty good goal. And it can, we, we need to constantly or continually be looking at what we're doing to, to determine if we're doing it the most efficiently and, and, uh, if it's having the effect we, we want it to have. And then we get into the new goals after that. These are goals that were discussed, uh, during the council retreat. They came up during our brainstorming session. So the first goal, first new goal was collaboration with inclusion, diversity and equity commission and community leaders, uh, and to enhance engagement efforts and organizational cultural competency. So just how we as an organization relate to the community. It's a pretty broad goal. There's a lot of things we can do in that goal. But I think that, that captures a lot of ground and, and some of what we're hearing from, from, uh, some of the input we received even right prior to the retreat. Uh, next one has to do with leveraging and expanding partnerships to maintain and enhance behavioral health services to community members in crisis. Uh, we've had a lot of discussion about that over the, over the last year or two, uh, at the council level. Uh, you heard from both our chiefs about some of the issues we deal with, uh, in the community and some of the things we're doing, such as hotspotters and, and, uh, uh, the MOPS, the mental, embedded mental health professionals and so forth. This doesn't get into the specificity about how many and, and how much, but it, it does recognize, I think, one, the need for it and that that's a priority of the council and two, uh, that it, it takes more than the city to do that. We need to be working with our partners, you know, county, our, our mental health agencies, uh, hospitals and so forth.
Dave, my only suggestion on that one, I, I like the wording just fine, um, but my, my suggest moving it to the community's safety, um, section. Um, I think that one, that's, that's one of the ones, and actually this one and I believe, uh, potentially the next one, they end up being more of a safety issue, I think, than purely a quality of life. When I, when I think of quality of life and especially in relation to what else we're putting where, um, I just wonder if this might be the wrong section.
Yeah, some of the, I mean, it's, yeah, some of these goals will fit in two or three different sections. I mean, that, I, I think that's an appropriate place for that one is moving into community safety. I think that's a great idea.
So I, I've got a couple of questions here. Um, I mean, as I read it on its face, the goal will be achieved as soon as we leverage and expand these partnerships. So any contact that's made, the goal's achieved. Um, I, I think we need to probably get a little bit narrower and figure out what it is we want to achieve by leveraging these partnerships. I think we should also try to figure out how we're defining in crisis. Um, is that housing? Is that welfare? Is that mental? Is that emotional? Is that physical? Um, so I'm good with the goal, but, uh, I mean, I just think it's too broad and so many aspects that we could chase so many things and either say we've achieved it or done nothing.
Well, I, I, I would suggest that behavioral health services alludes to the fact that the crisis is, is going to be a behavioral health related crisis. That, that was the intent of putting that at that point in the sentence, yeah.
Okay.
May I bring up something, Dave?
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, now that we're at, uh, in, in this section with, um, you know, the, the housing alternatives and partnerships. I, I had mentioned this during the retreat. I, I want to, I want to make it a point, and I don't know if this is even possible, but in talking to the other mayors, I, I ha- hasn't come up lately, but I want to, I, I want it to be a tri-city thing. I want us to be at the same level or the same, um, to provide these opportunities for our citizens a, as, as a tri-cities. Is that, is that something we don't want to get into? Or is it something that we could at least, uh, try to, to communicate through our goals is to work with other cities to ensure that all of us, every one of the cities is doing their part to ensure that affordable housing is in place, so that it's not, because sometimes it feels like it's just Pasco. It's always Pasco. They always want to do things like that in Pasco. But I want to make sure it's equitable throughout the tri-cities. Uh, is that, anybody have any comments on that? On how, or maybe in the goal, we could just, uh, just include, um, the tri-cities versus just Pasco?
Well, I, I, you're talking about the housing one, the one below it?
Yeah, well, that's the one below, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I, I, I think one thing you could do, and I, I, I think that's a great suggestion. One, one thing we could do is, I, I, community partners may not be broad enough. That may look too much like Pasco, and maybe we say regional and community partners.
Okay.
If that's something you'd want to do.
And, and I guess it, you know, it kind of goes, it, it's kind of goes hand in hand with some of the things, uh, I'm sorry, I, I did jump ahead to the last one, but, um, anyway, I just wanted to make, uh, make that point that when it comes to, you know, helping out, that, uh, that we do our part, but we kind of expect the same with our, with our neighboring cities.
And I, I think that's, yeah, I, I think part of it is, I guess it depends on what you're thinking of when you say community partnerships, because, you know, the, the cities do work together pretty closely on a lot of things every day, but, you know, at the staff level. And so I, I, I kind of assumed, I, tri-cities is our community.
Okay.
You know, but if it, if it makes it more clear, I think regional and community is, regional would be a good add.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll piggyback on, um, what Saul's saying there, because I, I, I agree. Uh, one of, one of the flavors that we've, we run into a lot is that, and you talk to people, not necessarily, you know, staff members of, uh, of Richland or Kennewick, but that, you know, community members and there's, they don't all see us on equal footing. And I think it's really important to start, start making that point more. So I'm, I'm, I'm with Saul. If we can be a little more emphatic about, about how we intentionally approach our neighboring cities, I think there's, there's some value out of that. And that, and that, Dave, doesn't reflect on you at all. That also reflects on us and, uh, also makes a statement to, to the, to, to our community members, uh, to our Pasco, our Pascoites, uh, that we, that we're all in this together and that we need to be making it, we need to make sure that the other cities are, are, are all in as well.
Okay, great.
Yeah, uh, this is Councilmember Alvarado. I'm wondering if, uh, the language for that would be, I don't know, here, but perhaps in, you know, down, down the, down the line would be something akin to a, uh, interlocal agreement of some sort.
Yeah, I think as this goal matures, you're, you're going to have, you know, new things come of it. And, you know, we, we do, uh, for instance, I think, I think everyone's aware there is a, a regional housing partnership that we're in with the other two cities already. But that's just one element. And, uh, you know, council recently is, is, uh, uh, taking advantages of a couple of state tax programs where we're going to have some more resources. I don't know where, or what Richland and Kennewick have done with that. I have not had that discussion with, with Cindy and Marie, so. But that, that might be an avenue, if they have, that might be an avenue where we have some resources to pool as well, so. Okay, so.
My question from the leveraging and expanding partnerships to maintain and enhance behavioral health services. That one, I would agree with council members, Toronto. It, it feels so broad, uh, sounds so broad, but I don't know what we mean by that and how we would measure, um, our leveraging and our expanding. Um, does that just mean council members are going to report to a new board, like the NAMI Board, National Alliance of, uh, Mental Illness? Uh, so I'd like to see a little bit more specifics, specificity in our action, uh, there.
And we're open to that specificity if someone has some, that they have an idea where they want to go.
Sure, I could lay one out. We have, uh, what, two current, um, embedded mental health professionals that ride, ride along with our officers. Um, obviously two is not cover 24/7. Um, I would like to see more.
Okay, so that's a budget item. I mean, I, I don't know that you want to necessarily, the goals are, I, I, I'm sure, I, I understand what you're saying, but the goal statement is kind of what we, what drives our budget. And I, I think we're all pretty clear about the benefits of what we've seen with that program and the benefits of what we've seen with the program down in, uh, in the fire department. Uh, with, with the, uh, full-time employee we have providing similar assistance there to some of our folks that are in crisis, uh, that the, uh, paramedics deal with. So I, I.
I guess what, the reason why, the reason why I'm throwing that out there isn't necessarily because I want that specifically in there, but how do we get from a level of specificity, specificity that's, you know, measurable and very actionable like that? And with goals, like where's the right balance point? Because I think we're going to run into this issue, uh, time and again through this. And, uh, you know, um, Pete brought the, you know, great point that, you know, where, what level do we want to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable to? Um, and how do we know we, how do we, how do we know we succeeded? That's, I guess that's, that's kind of what, that's the balance point I'd like to understand of. Maybe, Dave, what, what you think that might be valuable for us to get to between those two.
And I, I think what, what you're talking, you know, it's, you know, we, we had, the breed-specific law was, you'll notice if, if you've had a chance to look at this, and I know some of you may not have yet, uh, breed-specific law is not in here as a goal. But I just have it scheduled for next month for council to talk about and evaluate. And that's, that's a task. It's really not a, it's really not a goal. It's an action item. And, uh, you know, so something that we're going to say, we're, we're committed to mental health. We, we would look at this from, you know, a goal from a, from a, uh, budget standpoint, staff's going to look at this and say, partnerships to maintain and enhance behavioral health services to community members in crisis. That totally supports the MOPS program. And now that funding runs out of that, I think the middle of next year. And so that would, that would trigger us to do two things in budget. One, uh, may have a, a discussion and maybe pull, hold out some reserve money in the event that we need to float that program, uh, for all or part of the biennium. And two, to actively participate in, with, with Lord's and getting that grant extended or renewed. Or, and three, to be working with the group that put that grant together in the first place to look at all other opportunities where we might be able to get that money. Because since, since that time, there's been state money allocated to that. And so that, that type of, uh, service. So I, I guess I'd just throw out there that, you know, that would, that would be, we, we don't need a goal. Uh, we, we, I don't think staff needs a goal, and I don't think the community necessarily needs a goal to authorize them to work with the community members to, on specific, go after this grant, go after that grant. Make sure we have, you know, MOPS professionals. I, I think making it a priority in your goals sends the message to the public and to staff from my, from our perspective. Now, I mean, it depends, I'm not sure what, it, it, it depends on what you're trying to communicate with your, with your goals. If we want to have goals like that, that level of specificity, we can. And, uh, it'll, it'll be a long goal statement, but, uh, I don't know if that's helpful. You know, we have, you have goals, you have objectives, and you have action, the action plan, which basically is all the tasks you're going to do to, to, uh, to meet your objectives and your goals.
Well, I, I surely understand what you're saying. Um, and, and it is, uh, I'm just thinking that it, it is important that it, that it stays broad, because, um, if we get too specific, we could also be, uh, putting ourselves in a position where it, it might be mandatory, or people might feel that it's mandatory. Uh, and I'm just, again, thinking out loud, this is a workshop, so, um, but I, I, I appreciate your, your explanation and, um, and the, the thought of, of it just, you know, being a goal. And it, it looks good to me, uh, but, um, that, that's really all I have on that.
I guess the one thing I would add to that, Mayor, is that it also can, it can be, if you're too specific, you can be too limiting too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think that there could be opportunities that we can miss if we're looking at a, a limited, uh, scope. Um, and so being able to say, um, that we want to continue and expand what we're, what we're currently doing with, uh, with, uh, mental health support. I think that that, that gives staff that sense that, hey, this is, we, we, we not only want to keep it status quo, but we want to make sure that it's, that we're meeting those needs. So I, I would agree.
Okay, I, I will, I will work with that wording a little bit to see if I can't make it a little more clear. Provide some clarity. I don't, I don't know that I want to promise specificity, but I will, will make sure that the message is clear that we're wanting to help people. Yeah. Okay, so, uh, the top of the next page, um, another, another new goal. Uh, we had a lot of discussion on, we had, we had a great discussion on third place spaces and, um, walkability. Walkability and how neighborhoods are sort of put together in this this, uh, you know, to Craig's point. This this could also probably fall under economic vitality even, but, uh. This goal has to do with update updating design standards for the development of new neighborhoods and redevelopment as appropriate. And, uh, basically, it's just making sure that as our city develops, and we're gonna be adding fifty thousand people over the next, uh. Well, forty-eight thousand people over the next nineteen years, uh. Yeah, it's making sure as our city develops that, you know, our new neighborhoods, particularly in in the our infill and, uh. More so where we have opportunities in the in the large unincorporated chunks are gonna be designed in a way. That they're sustainable out in the future and provide a high quality of living, not not that our neighborhoods don't now. But just meet that, meet some of those goals that the councils are looking for in terms of walkability, uh. Open space, those type of things.
Is it implicit that that new design standards uh in development do encourage sustainability and walkability?
No, it's not in that goal, so I need to work on that wording, and I will be happy to take any suggestions.
Yeah, I think for that it would be that promote. Uh, third spaces or walkability or whatever we're trying to say, I think that, uh, those design standards. For developing new neighborhoods and development, it it seems like it, there's no um direction there. It seems like we're gonna have new standards and when as new neighborhoods develop, but not necessarily why. Um, and so I think the why is because we want to develop uh more cohesion within our. Within our neighborhoods that have community identity, dirt spaces, walkability, things of that nature, um. And I I think those would be broad enough to be able to identify, but I'm not sure, but that's kind of how I'm I'm reading this.
I think that that's a great suggestion and my apologies for that incomplete goal, it. I I knew what I wanted in there, but it never got out of my fingertips after I got past appropriate, so sorry about that. Thank you, Zara.
Hey, no need to apologize, and I really, I really like this goal that that council member Alvarado has put out there and. And, uh, that you've been working on.
Yeah, I would echo that, um, Alvarado mentioned a couple of key words that would be important to to complete that sentence and that goal there. Cohesiveness and, you know, those kind of things, and yeah, I like it, you're good, Mr. Alvarado.
So, uh, one 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 additional possible additional thing, uh, I know council member Milne has talked a couple of times about, you know, for example, those, um. Those walls we have immediately adjacent to sidewalks on Court Street, um, and that was something that we, I believe we discussed at the retreat as well as just, um. That sort of like tunnel-like feeling that we had to have in a couple of areas, is that, is this goal intended to. Um, address that as part of the the design standards and such, Dave?
Yes, I think it wa- I think it easily could, and so I actually threw a couple of words just to think about aesthetics and, uh, open openness. So I I I will work on this goal and and, uh, clean that up so it better captures the discussion.
Better hire a poet, I think we really care about this one.
Yeah, no, this is this is an exciting one, so. Oh, I I matter of fact, I know just the person that's gonna work on this one, his initials are Jacob Gonzalez, so. Okay, next one, uh. Has to do with updating part, another new goal, updating parks facilities comp plan. Uh, that really didn't come up as part of the discussion, but what you would do in an update to the parks facilities comp plan came up. Where we talked about, uh, public facilities and LOA, level of service and inventory and a needs assessment. Uh, we had a discussion on multiple centers, one that we have and two we don't have yet. And so, as I mentioned before, that kind of ties into the one we talked about second or third down. Um, so my suggestion would be. Incorporating all that into a a, uh, parks facilities comprehensive plan update.
I personally like this goal just the way that it is.
I think one suggestion I would have is, um. And I don't know if this is the right place for it, but to me, it seems public spaces and, um. Uh, you know, parks, things things of that nature are gray, but it really matters what you do there. Uh, especially when you gather people, obviously, this is not the time to to figure that out today, because, well. Uh, in this season that we're on for COVID, but I think being able to have meaningful programming. Uh, that happens in these spaces, uh, I think becomes really important and a great opportunity for city to build community. Um, you know, identity and things of that nature, and we do that through some of our events. But there's, uh, you know, some some, uh, cities that do, uh, some great functions at their parks. Um, some are, uh, created by, uh, partnerships or residents, uh, for instance, I was looking at, uh. In Detroit, they really did a whole lot of re- reinvigorating their, um. Their community by doing a community bike ride or things of that nature that are simple to do. But that, you know, being able to promote some programming that happens at these parks. We we do that, but I'm I'm wondering if if that's something that we need to add to our, uh, goals.
I think a a discussion on that and the comp plan update, or the partisan rec comp plan update, it'd be a good place to have that discussion. So I can, I can add that to this goal if that's council's preference.
If it were to be considered, it'd be something meaningful programming or something along those lines, something simple like that.
Yes. Then we would just make that an element of the plan.
Is that something separate from level of service?
Yeah, le- level of ser- level of service was the discussion we had on parks maintenance. And whether or not we need to put more investment, uh, from a from an operations as well as a facility side in in some of that.
Yeah, I really enjoyed seeing the, um, sundown in the tri-town, I really, obviously, the events are awesome, and so things that people can look forward to. Uh, attending once we are out of this COVID situation, obviously.
But to your point, the the more we're gonna use our parks that way, the higher level of service we're gonna have need for them. And the more versatile, the higher level of service, the more versatile they're gonna be as well, so.
So has there been previously a comprehensive plan for the parks?
Yeah, I I believe we completed one about five years ago, but it was a fairly minimal update, it was either four or five years ago.
Does it include, um, what council member Alvarado is talking about, like a list of. Events that take place in the parks?
No, it was really, it was really focused on, uh, national parks. Uh, and recreation standards on acreage per population. Uh, for community parks and neighborhood parks and things like that, it was really, it it touched on some of our big capital projects. Uh, a lot of them are already in play, so we need to update that list anyway, so there it's it's timely to to do this update.
So I would, I would actually be in favor of what, uh, council member Alvarado is suggesting, maybe even just an. Inventory, uh, of some sort included in this comprehensive plan of what. Events take place that are, uh, at at which of these parks, um, and then as we suggested about, uh. Uh, about program.
Yes, those those elements would be included in the plan. Okay, so the next item, uh, council had a pretty robust discussion on affordable housing. And we had kind of gone into a lot of different things that the council has done and could do. Uh, and, uh, Director White had suggested, uh, the idea of a housing action plan. To kind of pull all these things together and approach them in a more perhaps con- comprehensive and strategic way, and so. Uh, the goal here is developing a housing action plan with a focus on strategies, uh, to promote affordable housing. And it sounds like we're okay with that. So financials. Yes.
That that would play into the, um, as you talked about earlier, the tri-cities, um. Efforts that we're doing, the tri-city-wide efforts that we're doing in partnership with the community, um, but this would be. In addition to that, that would be one component of what this sort of housing action plan would be, is that?
I tell you what, I am going to add in front of strategies, local and regional strategies. I agree, how's that sound? That was a great. Yeah, thank you for calling that out, yeah, that was a good place to reinforce that.
This would be Pasco's piece of this, right?
It would be, but we'd also have so, we'd have some discussion and coordination with the broader regional effort too, and and how we might. Better fit into that, and and that may, hopefully, hopefully that'll spur some, uh, partnerships, uh. Along those lines and get those other communities talking about that well in a regional as well, more more than just the. Uh, Regional Housing Coalition, just the partnership that we have now.
Great, thank you.
I'd be curious to, uh, learn if this is a topic that other councils. In their in their planning, I don't know how they, their timing or anything like that, is this is anything that they've been talking about, if 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 that's the case. It might be good to, uh, for us to engage, uh, in that way, if not, then perhaps in a different way.
The the topic of affordable housing, yeah, I I I can tell you pretty much that's a that's a discussion in every community.
Yeah, and so if Kennewick and and Richmond are are having those discussions, then that's good, that that would be honey for us to know that. Uh, you know, hey, well, let's do this, and let's do this together in a way that really, uh, you know, we can leverage our resources.
Okay, so the next, uh, item had to do with financial sustainability. Uh, relating to long-term financial viability, value and service levels of services and programs, including. And, uh, that's that's the goal, overarching goal statement, so the first goal under that was, um. Importance to the community, which to me was a was a little bit vague, I mean, I think if you were at that retreat. You can't, you kind of knew what that meant, but if you weren't at that particular retreat when that one got added. And you're coming here a few years later and you see importance to the community, you might want a little more. Uh, explanation, so that my my efforts were just to kind of provide a little clarity, regular evaluation of services and programs. To confirm importance to the community, adequacy and cost benefit, to make sure that what we're doing is actually needed. Uh, that we're running a program that at least serves the need and that we're doing it in a cost-efficient way. Okay, the next goal had to do with continuation of, uh, cost of service and recovery targets. And this is, this has to do with sort of fees and and charges and things like that to make sure that, uh. For instance, uh, whether, you know, development pays for development, or that a a user of a specific service isn't necessarily being. Subsidized by the rest of the community, that that folks that are getting something a little bit different or a little bit special are paying their own way. Rather than the general taxpayer picking it up in their property and sales taxes. All right, so the next item, again, this is just a little bit of a clarity that we added, uh, although that we we. I did add some things, uh, you'll note on customer satisfaction, uh, that was a a a result of, uh. Some retreat discussion, uh, so ongoing evaluation of costs, processes and performance. Uh, associated with the delivery of city services, including customer satisfaction, staffing, facilities and partnership opportunities. So that was tried to try to capture some of that, uh, concern that was brought up, so, you know, underneath this is going to be. You know, when when we, you know, if we're, when we do an evaluation and we know there's a, there's a need for improved customer service, that's where. Training and and, um, you know, addressing those issues, uh, will arise.
Dave, do we have anywhere that that captures, um, community complaints and concerns, um, I know we all, all those council members get emails about. Oh, gosh, you know, I hate this about, oh, I can't believe the city's letting this happen, or a number of other things like that, you know, some of them are, uh. Some of them are 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 things within the city's control, some of them are not, um, at the various degrees of, uh, of, um. Understanding what those roles and responsibilities are, uh, but do we have anything that captures those and, um, so so we keep a running log of any of that? Or is that kind of part of that, like, four-one-one app or whatever?
Yeah, we capture a lot of them and track it, so the folks that actually go on our website and use the. You use the link that's on there to to raise their concern. Uh, it goes into Tracket, and then we're able to capture that, we're able to pull it out, we're able to analyze it and determine how many of these are we getting. How how many complaints at this intersection because of a site distance thing, or, you know, code enforcement issues, or whatever the issues might be. If, um, if they go directly to me or to a council member. Or other city staff member, a lot of times they don't, the the staff, we try to make sure they get in to track it. Uh, but frankly, uh, a lot of times if you, if, uh, council members send me something, something, my my focus is on getting the issue addressed, not. I'm probably not as diligent about documenting it and putting it in a Tracket, Tracket as I should be, and so we lose some of those. Um, items when they go directly to council members or. Uh, particularly senior staff, actually junior staff, the lower-level staff are probably a lot more diligent about making sure it gets in Tracket. And, uh, the three-eleven system is, that's gonna make it a lot easier, because that's gonna be, you know. Much more accessible through social media, you won't have to go online necessarily, but you can, but you can do it through social media, Facebook or whatever, you won't have to. Log on and, you know, go through the hassle you have to go through now for Tracket, and, uh. That'll capture that same information, and, uh, I think provide us some really good in- information, but I I think it probably isn't gonna be bad to have. Some kind of goal along the the three eight, three-one-one system implementation in here somewhere, and I'll I will try to find a place to. To put that, uh, based on this discussion. I talked me into it, yeah.
So Dave, I'll 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 just ask if we were doing it, I mean, I wasn't.
You know, I I know, I did that to myself.
As we discussed this, Dave, um, you know, I I know that a lot of times. It it just seems like for me, there's always like. One or two organizations within the city that get the most complaints, I don't know if it's because. It's the busiest, it's not, uh, it's in something new every day, it's not so much established, like, for example. Um, you know, the licensing, I mean, I've, uh, there was a, there was a lot of work to get that up to par, it got there, and now it seems like. Hmm, hardly any more complaints there, uh, but it seems like, uh, some of the city services, uh, the the complaining comes from. You know, uh, basically, just a small amount of the organizations, and what what's what's really difficult is that we'll. Base all of our evaluations based on, you know, just one or two, uh, when I don't think it should be that way. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, um. I'm just trying to figure out, uh, trying to think of more words, and maybe I can come back later, um. On how we could, how we can continue to, as a goal, to improve city, uh, the delivery of ci- city services. And not let one or two organizations reflect the rest of the city services, you know what I'm saying?
And we and we have thousands of transactions in a month.
Yeah.
And we we don't, I I I think by and large we don't have that many complaints about city services, but, you know, by and large. The the services the city provides, and, you know, you see our satisf- our survey, our. Community survey, satisfaction rates are pretty high for most of our services, you know, so it really, it just kind of depends on. Who you know, and then you you get to kind of burrow down into the complaint too, because a lot of times the complaint. A lot of times the complaint is based on.
Somebody's benefit.
Yeah, somebody. Yeah, somebody, something that somebody doesn't necessarily want to do. And, you know, I I think. You know, sta- staff can't, you know, if it's in the code, that's the word of the city council. Now, it might have been a different city council, but that's the word of the city council. And so they don't, they don't really have the authority to ignore that and to make this person happy. But on the other hand, we we have a. An obligation that if if we think it's unreasonable. We should be bringing that to the council. So I mean, I I think that's, that's one place where I think we as, in any staff, and I've I've seen it everywhere that I've been, you know. That's one place that getting from that, this is what the code says, so this is what you're required to do, to that level of. This is what the code says, this is what you're required to do. I cannot give you any relief from it. But you raise some good concerns, we're going to evaluate this. And if it warrants, you know, we're going to talk to council about making a modification. That that's the trick is to getting to that level. And I don't know if that's necessarily a a goal thing or if that's really more of a. You know, in in itself, or if that's more of a ongoing evaluation of processes and performance associated with the delivery of city services. Kind of captures that. I guess the question is, are we doing that to the level we should be doing it?
This is Councilmember Alvarado. I I I agree with that. That that's definitely a very hard thing to do, especially since we have. Organizations within our city that are, that have different functions and people may go in and get a dog license. And be a very straightforward thing versus a permitting process that's, you know, people are putting lots of money into their developments. And, you know, they they have a lot more invested in their, in their, in their emotions about it. And so. You know, the the interactions are going to be different and they're going to be different to quantify and qualify. But I think perhaps the overall, as as a team, I think, well, and and me speaking for what I've, what I gather from. My colleagues here is this, making sure that we are promoting a culture of customer service. I I think that that's really the heart of it for me and. I don't know if that goes within the, within the, could go within the goals that this is the culture we're trying to promote. And that may be seen, you know, once we get to objectives through proactive training and perhaps some of those evaluation. But that we're not doing, you know, having people go into these trainings or whatever it is that we do as a punitive way of, hey, you're not meeting the. You know, performance measures. No, this is who we are and therefore we provide these trainings, we provide this. Opportunities for folks to really build this culture. And so that's, I think, more of the heart of where I was coming from and then and and I'm sure my colleagues as well.
Let me, let me work this a little bit. I think these three goals, the la- the last three you've talked about are maybe things we could probably work into. Three, just just I think, I think with some massaging, we could probably capture better. What you're getting at with that col- I like the culture of customer service. I like that phraseology. But I don't want to shoehorn it into something. I I kind of want it to be a standalone goal. If I can, if that's okay with council. So let me, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna work on these three with some of our staff members and see if we can't. We've worked them a little bit. To get to get to where we're going. I I think I'm pretty clear as where you want to go. Okay, then we had a couple new goals here, so. Updating of policies, oh, yeah, this has to do with the unincorporated islands. Particularly out in the Riviera area. And updating of policies relating to urbanization of unincorporated islands to assure consistency with long-range planning. And fiscal sustainability. I mean, those are, bottom line, those are the two things. We want to make sure that what happens out there is is. Not going to have to be subsidized by the rest of the city and because it's inefficient or and that. It looks a little bit like the rest of the city, recognizing there's going to be some limitations that are going to happen out there just because of development patterns that have. That have happened and will will remain. I mean, there's folks that are going to have a two and a half acre lot for the next fifty years because that's what they want. They're never going to subdivide it, which that's their right. That's that's fine. They don't have to subdivide it. But I think that captures our discussion about unincorporated islands in a, in a goal, at a goal level anyway.
As a, just as a quick comment, Dave, and and council, I just want to let you know that I'm trying to be. Observant here. I'm trying to get about halfway through the list and then we'll take like a ten minute break and then finish off the rest of it, okay? So I just, i- if you're ready to take a break, I I'm just trying to get about halfway through it and then we'll we'll continue on. So, thank you.
Just real quick, I I appreciate that, but real real quick on this, on this last one here. For the unincorporated areas, Dave, I know one of the issues, one of the reasons why we have to decide standards for transport roads and other things is for. Access for emergency response vehicles and such. There's elements of community safety that are also part of what this sort of standards that we're trying to give for joint development standards and and. And such before the unincorporated areas. And it may be useful to reflect the fact that there, this isn't just a, we want, we want everyone to look like the rest of the city. But there's really some other reason why we have these things in place.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion, that an arterial stays an arterial and a collector stays a collector. Regardless of boundaries, yeah. I will incorporate something along that lines in there. I've got a little note to do that, so. Okay, so the next one, this was regarding proactive policing efforts. And I'm recommending that, well, we that we we kind of have two choices. My initial, and and this was in the packet that you had at the retreat, suggestions that that we just add a bit about. Enhancing police, community policing efforts with emphasis on outreach. Sorry about the extra efforts. But I'm I'm actually suggesting we replace that with, the chief had brought up a. Proposal for a police strategic master plan. And so I'm suggesting that all of those bulleted items you see in the middle and a lot more would be. Part of, it part of a comprehensive master planning process. And you you may, suggesting that you may want to replace the old goal with. Development of a comprehensive police master plan, knowing that you're probably going to have several goals come out of that plan. In your next final update of your goals.
I'm not sure if that captures as a goal of the council. I mean, having a strategic master, a strategic plan as a goal is good, but why, I think, becomes the. The question for me, I mean, as as a voice for our constituents, you know, it's good to know that we have a plan. But that the plan is because we want to outreach our community, because we want to. I don't know if we're, we lose something by by saying that as far as the direction of council. That that's my only pushback on that. I don't, I I'd be curious to see what 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 council members think about that.
I I tend to agree with you, Mr. Alvarado. The the development of a comprehensive police strategic master plan should be a a task and not a goal. It sounds like a task to me, like that that's within the goal of enhancing proactive community policing efforts. That that's what it sounds like to me.
So I'll agree with that and I will say that the difference between this type of plan and a. An inventory of land use or parks plan is this will drive the activities of a department. Whereas our strategic plans for, again, land uses, that will, you know, deliver. The delivery there is how the city looks. It's it's not directing behaviors of. Of city employees essentially, which is what a police, police strategic master plan is. I think certainly that could even go into that middle component. That middle column, talking about, you know, make it a component of, I think, the more overarching goal.
So with this one, Dave, please refresh me if I, correct me if I'm I'm missing this. When I, when I look back at the proposal by. By the police chief at our initial retreat, we had a lot more words in there about why this is a. Comes at a strategic level as opposed to a task level and perhaps. Were missing some of those key elements that the chief had put together in that as part of this conversation and maybe that would help. Help develop this further.
Yeah, I I would agree. As soon as Councilmember Alvarado said that, I again looked at this and it's one of these other cases where. The idea was in my head, I just didn't fully develop it. I apologize, but it really should say something. You know, that we're we're doing this plan to assure the Pasco Police Department is staffed and oriented to meet future and current needs of the community. Something, something along those lines, you know, it needs to say this is why we're doing a strategic plan, not just to do one.
The, what the chief had put together before was provide for a comprehensive planning effort to evaluate future service levels of the police department in order to assure. Sustainability, public safety and crime control on the face of the growth anticipated over the next five to ten years.
Good words.
Would that be other council members' thoughts there to kind of expand that a little bit as to what that really means or is that still missing the mark? So I think, I I like, I'm I'm not sure I fully understood, Mr. Serrano, where you were going with that exactly, so I just want to make sure. Not opposed to what you were saying, I'm just not sure I got it. So if you don't mind adding some more words to that.
The the point that I was trying to drive was, I think it's very similar to what. Mister Alvarado, the mayor, was saying, you know, this is a great plan, it's a component of the overall goal. But again, I would say that utilizing the concept of developing a plan here is different than a parks and rec plan. Where we're inventorying facilities, you know, here we're not inventorying anything but behavior. So it's going to drive how city employees, Pasco PD members will interact with citizens. And I think. The goal should not just be limited to creation of a plan. Again, I think that's a subset of a, an overarching goal of. You know, how those interactions are driven. Again, it will be partly by the plan, but the. The overall goal is just how policing is is effective in the community. And again, I I see that different than inventorying items, if you will. Though, I I don't know if that adds clarity.
I guess for me, it's a chicken and egg situation, is is what's more important, the police strategic master plan? Or a robust public process? I I tend to think that the latter is more important to me. At being able to have a participatory community that helps shape our, you know, our future. I I think, I mean, I I I think, yeah, just. Wordsmithing, I think the the why, I think it becomes important to me.
Okay, great. I think I think we kind of have a pretty good understanding. We'll take a shot at. To use your word, Councilmember Alvo, Alvarado, wordsmithing. Okay, next goal. We we didn't have a recommendation on that based on, I thi- I think everybody's views that favorably, we continue our efforts to to improve. Police community relations. And you can see some of the stuff that the, in the middle column, some of the. Efforts the the department's taken over this past year. And the next column, again, just a little bit of clarity on that goal, having to do with fire response times. Just reflection that it's long-range strategic planning of facilities and staffing. We've had a lot of discussion about that and we will continue to over the. Over the coming years, including at budget time. The following goal, so this one, this one's a little bit more thorny. We had some, a pretty good discussion on that. Because I think council recognized there's some financial impacts with the two alternatives. Just maintaining the, the, excuse me, even if we drop to a, to a rating class of four. There's going to be financial impacts to keeping a four enough, keeping a high enough level of service in the face of growth to keep a four. And recall that we were a five. And we kind of came down on a long, the the language that you see in front of you, focusing on the long-term goal of sustaining. The Washington State Rating Bureau Class Three, which doesn't necessarily say we're going to sustain at all costs. But we are going to plan to keep that. But council, we wanted to give council because of the. And you you recall the conversation with with Chief Gere, you know, there there's a. Some unknowns. One is a, is a safer grant that is a very favorable safer grant that, which is a federal grant. And the terms of that grant now are one hundred percent. For staffing for three years, which does give council a little bit more of an option than having to pay to staff a fire station. At a hundred percent of the city's cost, which you probably could not afford to do. So I wanted to try to give council a little bit of flexibility, walking into this to where you're not necessarily committing to a three. And that you're going to keep it at all costs, but that is your goal and that is your intent is to try to keep that three without breaking the bank. So I I'll shoot for a little bit of flexibility here on this one. I don't know if I captured that or not. Happy to take any comments. Okay.
I would just say I I appreciate Chief's help in helping us understand that concept. I think obviously. As as a, as a leading body, we can just be like, well, now we need a two, but I appreciate the reality.
Yeah, you could say that, but you couldn't afford it, but I I appreciate what you're saying though. Okay, so, next goal. We kind of, this this is based on some of the conversations that we've had, probably even prior to. The retreat among council and at the staff level, so this is again more about clarity. We we've put a lot of work into collecting information on our streets and getting that that information in a database. So utilizing collected data and in inventories on street sidewalks. And pavement conditions and to address needs, development standards and inequities, so. I got one too many addresses in there, but but essentially it's just better use of data. So we're a little bit more strategic in our decision-making. This was a, has been, has been a goal of the cities for a while in terms of sidewalks and streetlight systems and. And so forth, so.
Was this. Without, without going, should we mention bike paths on here? Or is that?
That that actually, that that actually is under the community transportation.
Alright, yeah, just wanted to make sure.
So Dave, this has been an important part of, you know, of my district and conversations I've had with people. This is really, really important to a lot of folks. The phrasing and way this is written. Could use an English teacher's touch. Maybe, maybe help it out a little, so perhaps we, I I don't, the content's fine for me, but perhaps we can. Maybe reword that in a way that flows a little better.
Yes. Yeah, not not to make any excuses for myself, but sometimes you don't see it when you have all the edits in. But I didn't want to accept them all because I wanted you to see the changes and so I I totally blew that one, so.
Sorry, no, no, no offense intended, communicates the right message. Took me a couple reads to get there.
I appreciate seeing the addressing inequities. That's certainly what some folks in in. Certain parts of my district feel the the sense of like the danger when they're walking to, you know, at night and things like that. So, yeah, I'd love to see some standards and how you can address those things long-term.
Yeah, I agree with both Mr. Maloney and Mr. Alvarado. If I'm not mistaken, this is something I brought up in our first retreat, the street lights and the sidewalks. And I'm just glad it's, it's on here now as a goal.
Is there any way, Mr. Zabel, we could, we, I know we've done some amount of repairs and such. Is there anything we can put in there, actual getting something done other than just policies? Or is that a budget issue? I'm not sure. What, what would we see?
Well, and you, you have done that, you, you have had a, a pretty consistent sidewalk program in your budget. Let me, let me think on that, how, how we might want to, how we might be able to, since I have to totally rework the grammar in it, I'll see if I can't punch it up with maybe some specifics as well. Okay, so let's see, on to community transportation network. Again, this is a project. It's a task, the Lewis Street Overpass. I guess I, I left it in here and didn't recommend taking it out, one, because it is so transformative. I mean, there's capital projects and then there's capital projects. And plus, we're at a, at a point now where we can actually, the revision is commence and complete construction of the project. That's a, part of that was just the fun of writing that goal, I think. So I, I'm suggesting that you, you keep it on here. It's been in your goal statement for probably 20 years. And this will be the last time it's in it. Okay, so completion of near-term improvements on Wrigley Drive, Burden. This really has to do with that area along SR, excuse me, Road 68 and Interstate 182. And these are some projects that the council had authorized in the last budget. So the goal is proposing to modify what those first phases are, which are completion of near-term improvements, including Wrigley Drive and Burden Boulevard, striping and signage improvements on Road 68 and, and Road 68 widening south of 182 ramp to Chapel Hill Boulevard. And our, our next phase, and we're in the, in the process of gearing up for that as well. Those, those projects actually, I know Wrigley will probably be out to bid the next few weeks. And the striping, if I'm not mistaken, is already out to bid. The interchange assessment is something we need to work on with, with WashDOT. And we've had, we've had, I think, really some good engagement with them on these other projects. And that'll, that I think needs to be added to your goal. So we have some longer-term projects and, and some partnerships on what we're going to do at that, at that particular interchange.
Dave, on this one, we started out from a spot of continued emphasis on improvements in the Road 68 and I-182, such as Burden Boulevard corridor. And then we got really specific here, which is good and bad. Because I think we lost the goal of improve the Road 68 and I-182, you know, traffic.
Well, I, yeah, and I, I'll throw out there that the, the key to that is the, what we do at that interchange. That, that's the, that's the limiter at the intersection of Road 68 and Burden. And so that, that, that last piece of that, we're, we're talking about the interchange assessment. That's going to be a, a planning effort with Washington State Department of Transportation to identify alternatives and start the analysis and hopefully engineering and improvements to that interchange so we can take away that block to, to Burden and, and Road 68. You know, whether, whether that's the double rate.
I understand that. We don't, we lost the words.
Pardon?
Yeah.
We just kind of lost the words that the goal is improving the Road 68, 182, Burden Boulevard corridor.
Yeah, seems sufficient to me.
Do you mean that keeping the original goal as stated is what we need? And then the, what's in the right-hand column is basically the tasks or the objectives to complete under that umbrella of the goal?
That's what I was wondering is whether we're, we got more specific here than I think we do on the rest of the entire document. And for good reason, those are great projects, just the goal is improved transportation flow through that corridor.
I think that's, that, that remains a good goal. I admittedly, I probably got as specific as I did because we were doing all that stuff and wanted to put it out there, but maybe this isn't the place to put it out there. Maybe keeping that goal as is, is the thing to do.
Yeah, I think for the public, that probably best, I, I don't, I don't, I didn't know what stripping was.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Mr. Maloney's comments. We will keep the original goal.
Is it possible to just add something, like a phrase in there to the original goal of emphasis on improvements and traffic flow, or something about mitigating traffic in that corridor?
That sounds good to me.
Let's see, we can maybe add to improve operation and safety.
That's great because then it more than encompasses just the, just the drivers and also the other people who are walking and riding bikes or riding in a stroller.
Okay.
Well, we're, we're about halfway through this. Do you guys want to take a break or do you want to just keep, keep going? It's up to you guys.
I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate a short break if that's okay.
Me too.
Okay, so we, we've got two more pages. Go ahead.
Yeah, I need to do a change of venue myself. So yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so at 6:28, at 6, 6:40, we'll, we'll reconvene, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Are you back on? Well, at six forty, is everybody back on?
Yeah, I know you can't see me, it's Toronto, I'm back.
Alright, thank you.
I'm back, but I'm gonna keep my camera off for the next few minutes while I eat my salad, so you guys don't have to watch that.
Okay, Mr. Maloney, are you on?
I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Alvarado's back on?
Yes, I'm, I'm here.
And Mr. Maloney?
Yep, right here.
Okay. And, oh yeah, Mayor Pro Tem Blanchard, I thought I heard her voice, but maybe not, are you on?
I'm here.
Okay, alright. So we left off at, uh... We left off at the, uh... Continued emphasis on improvements on Route sixty-eight and I eighty-two, and we finished that one, I believe, so go ahead, Dave.
Okay, so the ne- next one has to do with, uh... Uh, proactive traffic management, basically traffic calming, uh, within neighborhoods, uh, we're not proposing a change to that. I, I do think we need to have a discussion about that, uh... During, uh, budget, in terms of the kind of resources we can put to that. And if that scenario, council wants to try to, uh, increase resources, which essentially means staffing.
Well, one point I would like to make to that, and, and I know we're gonna get our data here soon, but I recall that we wrote into, um, the red light camera agreement, in the event that we recovered more fees than we paid out, we would put that into a specific traffic mitigation type fund, so that might be one place where we'd see essentially, um, a surplus of budget that's really not anticipated, and whether or not it's used for this, or that, Road sixty-eight corridor, or some other project, uh, this certainly could be one if we don't find a budget elsewhere. Assuming, we have bad drivers.
I, I gotta tell you, you're thinking like our public works director right now.
I don't know if that's a compliment, but I do like Steve, so I guess.
Yeah, he, he thought of that too, so, congratulations.
No, I appreciate that, man.
Yeah. Okay, so-
Appreciate you hearing that as well. I, I, um, I'm wondering if, uh, perhaps adding something about, um, not just blank, uh, blanket statement, but perhaps strategically, um, based on data? Something like, along those lines, I'm not saying that, but something along those lines.
Okay, I will work on that a little bit with, uh... With Public Works. Okay, so the next goal has to do with, uh, Phase Two improvements of Oregon Avenue, and so you, you do have that in your long-range capital plan, and we do have that in our six-year TIP, but, uh, I've, I've been assured now at least a couple times by, uh, the port, that, that's just not a priority for them. And, uh, I think that was a lot of the thinking behind this before. Uh, and this, this goal, uh, wound up getting in the council goals a little bit, just a little bit before my time, but, uh, the whole Oregon corridor initially wa- was a big goal of council, but I think with that Phase One complete, and then currently, we do have four lanes, improved lanes, uh, south of A, uh, down to Ainsworth, uh, and then, of course, the overpass to the, to the west, um... The port's feeling like that's pretty much meeting the needs for, uh, at least from an economic development standpoint, and, uh, and freight, and mobility, and, and things like that, so, um... Any, any widening right now, there would really not be much of a benefit to it, and, uh, there just does not seem to be a huge demand, well, relative to other places where we have demand with, with less improvements, there's not a huge demand for, uh, pedestrian access down there. So, I'm, I'm suggesting that, that you may wanna pull that off as a goal, and just, but certainly keep it in our, in our long-range plans, and, uh, and, uh, our, our six-year transportation improvement plan, and look for opportunities, if we can make that happen with, uh, federal money, or, or state money through, uh, Freight Mobility Board, or, or something like that, I think it's a great idea, but I, I don't know that that warrants the emphasis that it maybe once had prior to, um, Phase One being completed, and, and I think initially, you know, it was in here, it was, uh, the whole Oregon corridor, and then it sort of got split as Phase One was split, but I, I think the Phase Two kinda kept on that same level of urgency that the corridor project initially did, but I don't think it has that level of urgency with Phase One being complete, so that's just my own opinion, my suggestion would be to take it out.
No, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm o- I'm okay with that as well, I just want to, uh, just ask real quick, well, I know we're, that we're, that port's expanding additional, uh, you know, industrial land and, uh, long-term, uh, I can't imagine it being important in the, in this biennial, uh, process, but, uh, is that coming up, or is that gonna require some additional thoughts there, or is that gonna fall into the comprehensive transportation master plan, and we're talking a decade down the road?
Yeah, I, I think that's more a few years out, and probably more of a long-range planning than a project-specific planning effort.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so, uh, next item has to do with the, uh, collaboration with Ben Franklin Transit, uh... A lot of that happened during this bi- last biennium, uh, bus route expansions and, and, uh, some reorganizations, they're looking for, um... Uh, they're actually in the process of a master planning process, and, and putting a facility in a transit center, uh, within our downtown core, and, uh, we're recommending we keep that goal, and as worded, it, it pretty much, um... I think captures, you know, promote a highly functional multimodal transportation system through continued collaboration with Ben Flank- Ben Franklin Transit, uh, to enhance mobility. Maybe access could be added if that's, uh, something council's interested in, now that I look at that, sorry. Just because of the transit centerpiece. Uh, okay, so next one, uh, completion of the transportation, or comprehensive transportation system master plan, uh, utilize those recommendations to develop policies, regulations, projects that provide for greater connectivity, mobility, accessibility, uh, options, system efficiency, and safety, that's, it's a lot, but that's, those are probably the major elements of that plan, and they were all part of our discussion at the retreat, and I wanted to try to capture, uh, those items that the council, uh, discussed.
Dave, is the, is the word multimodal useful in this? I know that we already have a long list of adjectives in, in there.
You know, I, I, uh, was thinking options captured it, but multimodal probably would be a good substitute for it. If there's not an objection to that.
I know it's a bit of a buzzword, but sometimes, uh, especially at the state level and such, they look for buzzwords.
That's a buzzword everybody knows, so it's a good one. Okay, next, uh, a- area we get into economic vitality, which is about promoting and encouraging an ec- economic vi- vitality through a number of different, uh, activities, and that first one is, uh, by supporting downtown revitalization efforts of the DPDA and coordination of, uh, post-COVID restart. Uh, was it, was the addition? I think we, I think, uh, in part, at least for the biennium, we need to recognize that, uh, what's occurred over the last six months is probably gonna take a little bit longer to, to get through in our downtown, and they're gonna need some help down there.
I, I think, Dave, one of the things that we, we should be sensitive to, and I, I know when, um, council members Alvarado and Maloney and I were down there, uh, you know, we, we, we have a lot of focus on the DPDA being important, and I'm, I'm not trying to take away from, from the work they're doing, uh, but we recognize that there was a, an effort above and beyond that for what the city's role is, and I, I wonder if by being specific of the DP, to the DPDA of this one, um, is, it... DPDA isn't just downtown revitalization, there's a lot of city efforts and revitalization, or, I, I'm wondering if this particular bullet point is, is being too specific in who's doing the what.
If there's, if there's agreement on that with the council, we can, we can look at, um... So the original goal was, uh, supporting downtown revital effort, efforts of the DPDA, we, we could look at, um... Some language regarding city initiatives.
So if you were to remove DPDA, then when measuring the progress on the goal in the future, would that mean that you would, that the ca- the city would count what has been done within, by DPDA through, um, you know, allotment of funding, um, or would it be outside of that, then?
Well, I mean, I, I think part of that maybe goes to how council might wanna use the DPDA, I mean, DPDA is a function, it's, it's not a city department, but it is an animal of the city, I mean, you appoint the board, and you give them a mission, and, uh, you fund them to some degree, I mean, they, they go out and they raise their own funds as well, but, uh, the city council supports them, uh, not only, you know, for some of the more broader, um, economic, uh, development activities downtown, but also, uh, management of the farmer's market, and, uh, the, um, Pasco Specialty Kitchen.
I'm wondering if, though, um, having it, uh, outlined in the objectives, uh, DPDA as being one tool in the Swiss Army knife of revitalization, um, but perhaps not necessarily in the overall goal, has to enumerate, uh, DPDA as, it, 'cause it makes it seem that that's the vehicle, um, but, and I, 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 I get the sense that it's a vehicle that the city has, and then we can put that on, on the objectives, and I don't know if that's a way to kind of, um, reconcile it.
And, and maybe to take that one step further, um, maybe this is the right combination with the last new goal of develop, development of a downtown master plan. Um, revitalization and just, and, uh, and growth in the downtown is the goal, and the, and the downtown master, master plan is the is, is, is a way of, of outlining how we want to do that. Uh, so maybe if we combine those two, we can both clarify and, and make sure we're not, uh, that we're, 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 we're properly accomplishing all that's been done in downtown.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that as well.
Okay, we will take a shot at trying to combine these two goals. And make it a little bit more, more general. Okay, so next is, um... Uh, originally had to do with, uh, different infrastructure pro- improvements that were going, going on downtown, implementing those. Uh, again, leaving them in there just because they, they are pretty transformative downtown, the Peanuts Park and Farmer's Market, when you have an urban park like that, you're gonna really kinda change the landscape and, and the use of that park in our downtown, and I think it's gonna have a great uh, economic benefit down there, but, uh, moving to, from implementation to construction, uh, and then our, obviously our continued efforts signaling the committee, we're gonna continue, uh, efforts, uh, we've rounded up a little bit of state money for the streetscape and gateway projects, and we'll continue working on that, uh, to try to clean up that section between where, um... Lewis Street Overpass is gonna touch down at second, uh, down at least to the intersection at fifth. Initially. Get that core. Uh, next goal has to do with, um... Oh, excuse me, the ne- yeah, the next goal initially had to do with the comprehensive plan updates, and then the one under that had to do with the Broadmoor sub-area environmental analysis, and I'm suggesting that, that we just pull that together into one goal, giving the, given that, uh, the two comprehensive, uh, planning efforts are gonna be done about the same time, uh, as well as the environmental analysis. Uh, and so I just basically try to capture the fact that, uh, during the, uh, biennium, you, we'd be completing the comprehensive land use plan update and Broadmoor master plan effort, uh, you'd be adopting a growth manage, or assuming a growth, uh, urban growth area expansion alternative, uh, implementing adopted, uh, long-range planning efforts with appropriate analysis and implementation of planning actions, including zoning code changes, phased sign code updates, and development regulations and standards. And I, I think it's implied that the development of regulations and standards, uh, for different areas of the community are gonna be a little bit different, Road sixty-eight and Court and Downtown and Broadmoor are all gonna be treated a little bit differently, maybe a lot differently in some ways, where we have common walls, or or where we have, uh, a situation like Broadmoor where we have, we have a blank canvas. Okay, sounds like everybody's satisfied with that goal. Uh, the next goal, um, increased efforts to promote community as a desirable place for commercial industrial development by promoting small business outreach assistance and predictability in project review. I touched on the customer service aspect as well in, in this goal, just to, to reinforce that, uh, goal on, on the part of the council.
Thank you for doing that.
Alright, uh, next goal is another one we made some progress on, uh, Chapel Hill Boulevard, uh, being completed, uh, land sales, development of that property, the old DNR property, so, uh, the goal has been modified to partner with and encourage DNR to facilitate development of the remaining state property at SR sixty-eight and, uh, I one eighty-two, now the... I think the nuance here is, we initially had sell or develop. I don't know that it matters a whole lot to the city whether it's sold or developed, you know, is, is, excuse me, sold or leased, uh, as long as it doesn't sit barren for years and years, and, and that the, and that the, um, DNR is working on actively trying to market it and, and make something happen there, which they have, they partner with the city, we we weren't able to do it this year, but the previous two years, uh, we partnered with them, and we've gone down to uh, international conferences, shopping centers, and, and, uh, tried to market their property as well, and, 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 uh, we've provided them leads and, uh, you know, on that piece, and, and there, and there actually has been some interest even recently on that property, so.
And Dave, if you don't mind me asking, 'cause this may make a difference, is it still one of those deals where the DNR just wants to lease the land? Or are they willing to sell?
They're a little bit more open now.
Yeah, 'cause I think that's gonna, that was one of the big deterrents of businesses coming in, is that they didn't wanna lease the property, build, build a big building and lease the property, they wanted to buy it.
Yeah, I, I think the, you know, of course, the, we, we have a different lands commission that we had a few years back, and so, uh, Commissioner Fran's been in there, I think, two or three years now, and she is, you know, had a chance to get her, her, her feet kinda planted and, and figure out what's going on, and, and start to get to know these issues a little bit better, and, uh, uh, she's taking a bit more of a pragmatic approach uh, when it comes to mission and options and opportunities that, uh, that her agency may have.
I have a question about it, um, the two- I have a question about it, um, the two D N R, um, areas within the city limits has always. I shouldn't say has always, I don't know that, but has leased in the past to, for agriculture. If they do lease, would it, that be the use that, that it would have to be used? Um, because it doesn't seem to no longer fit with what's taking place in that area now.
No, that, that's a great question and, and I appreciate that. It, uh, it, um. Helps demonstrate that sometimes, uh, as bureaucrats, we're, we're a little bit assuming about what people already know. So, for instance, Lowe's is on D's leased D N R land. Lowe's and the vet clinic, or the dental clinic, Aspen Dental and, and Sonic and, and those properties up there. Are on D N R land as well as the piece right next door to it where you see that pivot on there.
The cornfield, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's actually our pivot because we're trying to perfect water rights out there. And we're hi- we've hired a, a local, uh, farmer to, to help us farm that so we can perfect our water rights, uh, that we. That we had an option on that we purchased, uh, from D N R. Uh, so that acreage across the street that we're talking about here, that's about fifty, or excuse me, sixty-five acres of commercially zoned land. And it's that, that area, the bulk of it lies just to the north. Just, just as you, as you pull in off road sixty-eight, start heading west. It's on that north quadrant down to the, to that ru- the first roundabout. That's, that's D N R owned land. And again, sixty-five acres zone commercial, so the development out there would be commercial. It, it, they're, they're not gonna be, yeah, they're not gonna lease it for agriculture and, and, uh. So I hope that, I hope that answers that question.
That does, thank you.
You bet. Okay, next one, um. Bro- uh, there was a lot of discussion on a strategic, uh. Well, there's a lot of discussion on tourism and a lot of different elements brought up and it. It seemed, uh, ripe for, uh, really a, a strategic tourism plan. You know, we've, we've, uh, worked regionally with the sports plan, uh, and council got a report on that several months ago. Uh, the MITRI effort, uh, we have our Colima partnership, so there's some things that are. Uh, so most Pasco, so there's some things that are regional and there's things that are city centric. And so, you know, again, this is one of these pieces where I, I don't see us working with just, uh. Our local chamber and, and, uh. Downtown businesses and a few other folks to do a tourism plan. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking we'd want to broaden this out. And be working with, with partners within the region, uh, to develop that kind of a plan. There, I'm sure there is work along those lines with, um. Tri-cities. I, I, I kind of envisioned what council was talking about and, and listening to is. How do we promote our, our community as part of the tri-cities? Not necessarily going it alone, but having some individuality too, because our, all, all three cities are a little bit different. So I, that's, that's, that's what I was trying to capture. That's kind of what I took away from, uh, the council's discussion, uh, a couple of weekends ago. I did?
But David, you know, you know, I like my master plans, but, um. I, I guess I never envisioned, uh, City of Pasco developing a tourism plan, so this is, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm still, I'm still chewing on this one a little bit. Um, certainly we have like, you know, when we talk about the, uh, sister cities with Colima. And some of the other things in terms of our sports tourism and such that are, are really big deals for our community and are. Uh, there's a lot, number of them that really are Pasco centric. I've just never thought of us as any in the tourism industry, so I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm still, I'm still, I still like to chew on that a little.
Yeah, that, that, maybe that's the wrong term. I don't know quite what to call it, but I think it's about. Getting people in our community and getting heads in, in our, in our hotels and. And, uh, the seats filled in our restaurants, things like that.
Craig, you forgot to mention Taco Cro.
Forgot to mention what? Oh, the Taco Cro, yes, my apologies. Speaking of seats in restaurants, yes. Let, let me look at that.
I, I, I see us being a support for that, like I, I, I strongly support us, um, um, helping with tourism. I just, I'm just trying to figure out how, how City of Pasco would take a bunch of lead of that. Other than the, the Colima, uh, sister cities, um, as a specific call out, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling.
Well, you know, we talked about a couple of weeks ago, our shiny objects that we may acquire at some point, so I think, um. As we strategically invest in improving our community, we can consider those as part of the sub-bullet. You know, whether or not we have a true plan or not, I think it's kind of, I'm indifferent on that, but I, I guess. You know, the regional sports studies and those sorts of things, I think we're putting a lot of money in various places that. I think it's nice to take credit for it, I guess is what I'd say there. Uh, whether or not we call it a plan or, or, you know, whatever we do with it, I guess that's how I see it. We're highlighting that we're actually doing something that in addition to providing services to our, uh, residents. We're also, you know, bringing money. I guess that's all I'd say there. And again, whether or not your goal indifferent, but.
And to support that, what was just said, um, we are doing that. I'm newer to Visit Tri-Cities board and council member Serano touched on it with the sporting complex. Which is to increase sporting tourism, but Visit Tri-Cities and the regional, um. Chamber really focuses on agri tourism, so the wine industry and produce and now with, um. You know, micro breweries, so I think it's something we're already doing. And we're already investing money into, uh, to visit tri-cities and so it, it's a way. That I see we could, um, you know, it can be measured in our objectives, uh, that we're, we are doing this, so those are my two cents.
Well, and let, let me suggest that not everything we talked about at the retreat necessarily has to have a goal. I mean, this, this was a discussion and, you know, uh, tried to capture. Some of what was brought up and put it under a broader category and may, you know, perhaps I missed the mark and. May, maybe it's just something we need to keep, keep track of and it's not necessarily something we need to have a. A council goal regarding tourism.
You're like perhaps our, our, uh, op- our. Goal is to, uh, build our sh- shiny objects and then in the next biennium, we can have people come check out our shiny objects.
That's gonna be tough to put into goal words, but okay.
No, please don't.
Okay, and I, I did get called out, uh, the goal above it, my apologies. Uh, again, that, that, this is, has to do with, uh, what's called, used to be called the Marine Terminal Area, now it's called the Wharf. And, uh, this is the city and Port of Pasco joint effort, uh, on the waterfront, front plan, uh. And, uh, there's been some progress on there and I was trying to capture some of that progress. So, uh, we're, we're proposing to revise that goal to read continued coordination with Port of Pasco to complete and implement, uh, waterfront zoning plan. So a lot of the work that's been over, over the years that, uh, has been completed, uh, the cleanup's pretty well accomplished now. The, uh, the wharf has been evaluated and there's, there are good assessment as to what's gonna be needed to be done to that in particular. Certainly we've had some. Thoughts, at least, at least some community dialogue on, on some of the possibilities, uh, down in that area. And so now we're in, now we're moving into a more focused planning effort, planning and zoning effort down there.
So David, this one, they, they actually announced a, um, developer, a contract with a developer or something, um, I think pretty recently.
Yeah, I di- I didn't know if you. Oh, sorry.
No, please.
Nope, go ahead, I'm, all ears.
I, I was just gonna say, um, I, I wasn't sure if that, uh, influences what we'd be doing over the next, uh, year and a half or so. Um, in relation to that, or if it's just zoning, if there's infrastructure partnerships that we're doing as well, like, or is it just. We need to figure out the plan, that the zoning first, and then we figure out what the infrastructure needs are gonna be?
Let me, I tell you what I can do is, uh, I, I think that's an excellent point on infrastructure. I will get ahold of, uh, Randy Hayden and chat with him a little bit and, or Rick and I will get ahold of Randy Hayden, chat with him a little bit. And, uh, see if it's appropriate to add a, add a little bit more about that in here.
Cause, uh, as, one of the things, uh, as part of, uh, MITRI twenty thirty, uh, brainstorming session on quality of life. And I, I believe that zip lines from, um, the river over there over to somewhere in Keno, it'd be just brilliant. We should have zip lines or maybe one of those little, you know, like, um, goggles traveling right along. I think, I'm just saying, we got, we should be thinking about those things too, cause that would be cool.
Yeah, I'll add that to the tourism plan, so.
Shiny objects.
That's right. Okay, so, uh, now we're to the next, to the goal underneath the, the tourism piece, but, uh. So in concert with community partners, and this is a new goal, in, uh, in concert with community partners, develop a comprehensive economic development plan. So there was a lot of discussion about that and I, I think the city's economic development efforts are. You know, they're, they're, we're pretty active and, uh, but we do not have a. Strategic plan and how we can best market each of the areas of our city. It's really been seeing things and go doing them. Uh, which is, you know, light years of what we were doing a few years ago. But I think it's time to get a, a much more sophisticated approach to, to how we're doing economic development.
Yeah, I appreciate seeing that, uh, I think the only thing that's missing there is Trader Joe's. So if you could work Trader Joe's in, I think we'll, we'll be good.
I forgot you'd mentioned that, yeah.
I support the Trader Joe's move.
Yeah, I'll put it right after comprehensive, yeah.
Might, might it be prudent, uh, might it be a possibility to maybe, uh, I mean, if, in, incorporate, um, tourism in our, our strategic approach to, uh. Sports and agritourism as part of the comprehensive economic development plan?
I see him taking notes, so I think that's a yes.
Well, I'm leaving that up to council, but I think it's a great idea, if you're asking me. Tour- tourism, agritourism and sports, yes.
Uh, I like it. I, I'd like to see the tourism in there somewhere, um, is it? I'm just curious, uh, as far as economic development plans, like, is there? Is there a standard? Is there, uh, you know, where do you go for something like that for best practices?
Well, that, the, you know, it's pretty standard is what you'd look at in, in the consultants that, I mean, it, it's a, it's a science, you know? So i- it's pretty well specified, but I, I think we would want to, I mean, each area is different, so. Some of the things that make us unique are things like agritourism and the sports facilities that we have. And the, the natural element, so we have the trails on both sides of the river for, you know, thirty, 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 thirty-six miles, thirty-seven miles of trails. And that, those are just the ones along the river.
This might be something that, you know, might be too much into the weeds, but. Since we behaved so well and stayed, uh, at the thirty thousand, uh, level, uh, elevation, I, I just wanna say that. I, I'd like it to have some sort of component in which it focuses on, um. You know, the development happening around our, you know, city centers, around our infrastructure, um. That is unique to Pasco and its growth. Uh, that's, that's an element that I, I feel like we really need to focus on is, is consolidating where this takes place.
Yeah, I thi- I think it would have to acknowledge, uh, what's developed through the, through the comp plan as far as land use designations. And then your subsequent zoning, although. I, I would anticipate this plan would probably be complete before you got too far along in your zoning pro- rezone process, but. But we'd ha- we'd have a pretty good handle on land use takes designations and, uh, and, uh, what was adopted in the, in the comp plan. I mean, I, I think we're, you know, we're really starting to, you know, without getting too sidetracked, I see we got. Six more goals left and it's still fairly early, six, seven more goals, but, um. I, I just, I will note, uh, since you brought that up, that we're really. You know, get, getting your plans all synced up, you know, from all your utilities to the comp plan, uh. Uh, economic development plan, those type of things, getting those things all on the, i- it's an iterative process, it takes a while and we're, I think we're. I'm feeling that we're really starting to. Be building those plans off one another and the, the seesawing that happens isn't nearly as dramatic as it wa- as it has been historically here. In terms of the water plan growth looks like this and the comp plan growth looks like that and they're five years apart and everything's different now and. Because our community grew so fast, uh. I think just the modeling, the strategic, you know, view that the council and the planning commission and staff has been taking. Uh, and, and the experience level, you know, in, in seeing some of this, have, now having. You know, I, I think staff, staff and the council were really, they, they had a lot of challenges ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. Cause the, just the unprecedented, unprecedented, uh, growth that they were dealing with. Just trying to stay up ahead, stay a step ahead of it was the challenge. And thankfully they did and, uh, that was no small feat, but now we're really getting our plans synced up. And it's really start, it's gonna pay off down the road for us. I'm, I'm pretty excited about that, so. Sorry for taking you down that road, but. Zara got me thinking about that with her comment and, uh, yeah, we, we want this comp plan, or excuse me. If we're gonna do an economic development plan, we wanna really recognize how the city has developed. What it looks like today and what kind of opportunities might be available today based on. Current developed land patterns, but also start to recognize over time, this is what's gonna happen and this is what we need to be thinking about.
I appreciate the, that background and that history, just because this is my first time in this process and, um. You know, I, I have so far only what I, you know, have on the page in front of me and so. You've probably got more historical knowledge than I do of, of how the process has gone in the past.
Okay, uh, downtown master plan, we talked about, uh, and we talked about incorporating that with another goal, so I'll just cruise past that one if that's okay. Uh, know that we have it captured and we'll continue to keep it captured. Uh, and I think part of that process, just to let council know in, in terms of my thinking about it and, and, uh. Uh, Rick White is, you know, downtown is not necessarily the DPDA, DPDA. Uh, district, um, boundaries. I, I think we really need to kind of. In some respects redefine downtown and what that really is at this point too, so, as part of this process. Okay, so now we're into community identity and you got a, a couple of new goals here, but we also have, uh, a few of them that we worked on. One, we, we, we feel it's important to continue the, the community surveying. Uh, and, and I, my, my sense of that is, you know, we, we certainly wanna keep, keep moving forward with, uh, the, um. National Community Survey, but there are also some new tools out there that I think we need to be, uh, looking at and they're, and, uh, and evaluating. Uh, so we can get a little bit better handled, maybe even on more current issues. The, the National Community Survey really gives us a good sense of trends over time. And, uh, a bit of a report card where we're at on certain things and, and community sentiment. But, uh, community sentiment on a specific issue can shift really quickly. And we're at an age technology wise. Where we're kind of starting to approach that intersection of accessibility, uh, to where, you know. Which relates to participation and, um. And how, how quickly we can get, get answers back on things. Not that we wanna run things by a poll necessarily, but. I, I think it's good to be able to pulse the community and so that's a, that's a technology I think we're gonna really start to kind of look into. Uh, a little bit harder over the next couple of years.
Yeah, as much as I've, in the past years and during my time on the council. As much as, uh, I don't like the cost of sometimes of how much it, it, it costs us to do this, but it, it really not only gives us a, um. but it, it really not only gives us a, um, some data in front of us for us, for the people who really like data, uh, to, to evaluate what the community really wants, but it also kinda takes us out of the bubble of, uh, maybe there's some things that we don't want, but the community wants, and that gives us the idea of, you have, um, at least to go research and open up a little bit and, um, try to do what's right for our community. So I, I think, I think it's important that we continue those efforts in community surveying.
Okay, so, uh, next item had to do with, uh, opportunities, uh, for community engagement through your boards and commissions. And this, 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 this element of community engagement is specific to boards, commissions, volunteer opportunities, and, uh, I, I think, uh, this last round of recruitment, uh, demonstrated a lot higher interest by the public. And it, it seems like a really good outlet, we had some really pretty impressive candidates. It was, I know it's difficult for, for the mayor and council to, to make their selections and confirmations and, uh, not feel like you passed over some really good folks too, and, uh, so I think that's been a pretty successful program. I did not necessarily, uh, suggest any modifications to that goal. I think it's a super successful program. Um, coordinated messaging, uh, expanded that a little bit, um. We, we've been able to, you know, uh, particularly John Funfar, um, and, uh, in large part Chief Gear too, we've been able to really, uh, enhance our inter, inter-agency coordination, uh, during the pandemic. And so I guess, you know, again, pan- pandemic probably won't be in our next biennial goals, but we're gonna, we're gonna feel the, uh, impacts of that for at least this biennial. And, uh, right or wrong, this has been a positive one, you know, we, we've really, you know, at the mayor level, at the city manager level, at all levels, we've really, coordination's been a much bigger, uh, more effective tool and much more used dur- over the past six months. And we wanna continue to, to take advantage of, uh, the system that we've built, so that's, that's the recommended modification of that goal.
I'm wondering if, uh, perhaps looking during, but also post?
Oh, yes. And post, yeah.
I mean.
Okay.
I missed what was said, I don't know if I'm just have bad connection, but that was, the wha- whatever was just said was garbled. If it could be, uh, repeated, that'd be great, thanks.
Okay, council member, uh, Alvarado suggested that, um, we include post-pandemic as well as during. In the goal.
So, David, I know one thing that we talked about a little bit was, um, more direct outreach to businesses and, uh, it's us going to, to people instead of having people, you know, more passively waiting for them to come to our sources. Is there, um, was that, was that well covered in, in economic development? I mean, I know that, uh, um, the Zara that ran to, you know, uh, business owners didn't know they could use padios as, as potential seating. And we talked of downtown businesses that had never heard anything from the city regarding potential funding and such. And so there, we, we discussed, we think a little bit about how do we more actively reach out to people and target those, the, the information instead of just, you know, except like, just waiting for people to, you know, read it to Herald or something like that. Would this be a place to cover that, or is there better places to cover that, um, I guess, thought?
Let me just suggest that this would be a good place to, to, uh, cover it, but there may be a, let, let me, as a minimum, it'll be here. But if I can find a better spot, and I will note it when we talk about these again, uh, or I shouldn't say a better spot, but one, one that fits a little bit better, um, I'll do that, I'll take another look. But I, I do, I do recall that conversation and, and, uh, it is in here, but it may be too subtle. And I cannot find it right now, to be honest with you, with these giant papers in front of me, so.
I just skipped through it before I said anything again, I couldn't find it either, but I think I saw it once upon a time.
Yeah, I, I will make sure it's in there, business communication, yep. If not here, it will be someplace else.
I mean, one thing we know is that people are moving away from local media sources, um, they're moving away from the local news, they're moving away from the, the, you know, the, uh, no, the local newspapers and are consuming much more of a national-based, uh, media. So I think some of the ways that we've, we could have reached people in the past just simply isn't gonna be enough anymore. Uh, but that means we need to kind of, you know, I, I think that our, our messaging, uh, during the pandemic has been fantastic. I think we've really upped our game, and so I, 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 I agree, I'm building on that. Uh, but in addition, we can continue to go a little further in terms of how we intentionally outreach to people like the businesses. So there's, that, that's all, thank you.
Okay. All right, um, so the next one has to do with identification and celebration of successes. Uh, wanted to note, I, I guess I, the update really kinda notes that we are, I think we're doing a better job of what we were doing a couple of years ago, but that we need to continue doing that, community and organizational successes. And I do have, I do have, uh, uh, a piece below that, that's, that's kinda related, that, you know, uh, council may wanna consider combining a couple of goals here, but let me get through the next couple, then we'll talk about the one you might wanna combine it with. Um, community image and enhancement campaign. I, I think, still think that's a pretty important thing for us to continue doing and, and working on. The, uh, consideration of appropriate implementation of recommendations from the inclusivity commission. We had moved that up and changed the wording, uh, into the quality of life section and expanded it. So if council recalls that discussion, I think we had a pretty good, robust discussion on that, uh, particular item. Uh, so I won't go back up to it, but suggesting we don't probably need it here as well. Uh, then you have a couple new goals. One is providing broad support of cultural events occurring within the community. We've, we've heard from some folks out in the community that, um, uh, uh, we're perhaps all in on, or at least seen as all in on some events, but only lightly on other events. And, um, and so I think that's, uh, my, my understanding of the conversation from council at the retreat. Uh, this is something that they wanted to, to address in their goals and, uh, be a little bit more participatory in some of the other community-wide events, uh, that are happening, uh, in Pasco. And that, that's the one I was thinking, um, we might wanna combine into one event with, uh, with the one above that talks about continued promotion of community and organizational successes, but I think there's a connection there, but, you know, I, I guess in looking at, and I'll throw it out to council in, in looking at that, um, I, I don't wanna take away from council's commitment to, um, to community events by combining, combining too, unless that's something council feels is appropriate.
I feel like combining is, is appropriate with the one right below it. Support the Arts and Culture Commission and promoting unity and celebration through art and cultural programs. Um, and then they can specifically task, you know, or make recommendations of how to do that.
So when we look about which community events we're talking about, right, we're talking, we, we, we support, um, to some extent, Cinco de Mayo. Um, we have, the DPDA is actually an organization that I think we've asked to do three events. Um, plus separately, we, our Parks and Rec has a very large role in the Grand Old Fourth celebration. Um, and so actually the Arts and Culture Commission currently doesn't do any of the events that we're currently talking about. And so if we, if we do that, we just, we need to be, I think, I, I think if we're, if we want to move all those under the Arts and Culture Commission, that'd be one thing, I don't, I don't know that that's exactly how we wanna approach it. So I'd hate to bury one set of events under the Arts and Culture Commission and have the others, uh, highlighted differently. Maybe just as long as we're being thoughtful as to how we're approaching that.
Sure, I hear you about that.
I was actually wondering whether we wanted, might wanna kind of combine the two that say, the continued promotion of community and organizational success and the implementation of a community identity slash image enhancement campaign, whether those actually made some sense to, uh, kinda squish together there.
Yeah, one does seem to be related to the other.
And also, this, when the, uh, when we had the, uh, the flyovers, uh, uh, last weekend, I was there, um, my, me and my family went down to, down to the park there, we were on the, on the river, um, right near Colonial. Um, anyways, we walked down to look at some of the new con, the, the new apartments and stuff that are gonna be built that overlook the river. Um, and honestly, what I could, I kept remembering was, um, a bit of a phrase that was kicking around where we will say reclaim something called, uh, where we talked about, where, where, um, community, uh, a, a, uh, council member in Kennewick had made some ill-advised statements, uh, and we kinda reclaimed the, uh, the wait till you see Pasco. And all I could think of, watching this beautiful development and looking at the river and watching these families hanging out in our parks, just how awesome it was. Like, I think it's like how many people are missing out, just wait till they see Pasco. So I'm a big fan of these, uh, of trying to make sure that people understand who we are, not who we maybe were, or who they think we are.
We should have redesigned our logo to say that. But no, I think the point's will, that, uh, as we promote our successes, hopefully that can change our identity. I, I, well, I, I, let me restate that, I don't think we need to change our identity, I think we need to change how we're viewed. So, I mean. Yeah, yeah, wait till you see Pasco. That's our next hashtag.
Okay, so that, that kinda walks us through the remaining goals, and then we did have one item that we brought up, and I alluded to it earlier. Excuse me, I alluded to it earlier tonight, that's bre- breed specific law. And just a reminder to council and anyone that might have missed it, uh, that's online, cause we did have some folks, uh, interested in that topic, uh, listened to our retreat. That's scheduled, and I, I can't tell you right offhand which date, but it's, it's on one of our October workshops to discuss. So rather than make it a goal, it just seemed more like something we just needed to do and have a discussion on, rather than put it in your goal statement, so. So with that, I will, uh, we'll, we'll work with staff, we'll walk through, uh, uh, what we heard tonight and, uh, try to make the, uh, appropriate, uh, changes and get this into, to shape. We'll probably bring it back to you at a workshop, uh, rather than a, than a meeting, just so you can have one more look at it, uh, in case there's a few minor tweaks if we didn't get something quite right. And then we'll, uh, we'll schedule it for adoption after that. And, uh, very much appreciate council's engagement tonight and, and, uh, very helpful comments and, uh, and your, most particularly your time.
Well, council, thank you very much for, again, your participation. And, um, we're looking forward to, to having, uh, one last look at a, at these modified goals and, uh, and go from there. So does anybody wanna have any closing statements before the, will we close tonight?
I just wanna say, I wanted to say I appreciate you all and this epically long process of, uh, of, uh, finalizing goals, um, it wasn't as painful as I thought it might be to do it virtually. Uh, and I think that that says something about who you all are, um, so just wanna appreciate each individual and their contribution to this. This has been fun, thanks.
Thanks, Councilwoman Roach, go ahead, whoever was next?
I just wanna say real quick, uh, uh, thank you so much, Dave and staff, for, for the hard work that goes into this. I know how hard it is to try to take, um, that many, that, that much conversation that we had and then try to distill it into something that makes any sort of sense at all. And so I really appreciate your effort, and I think you did a great job, Dave, and, um, and, and, uh, the other staff support you, so thank you so very much.
Will you redeem yourself after that English comment?
It might be late to soften that up, but, you know, I gotta be what I can.
Okay, I got to take skin, all right, anybody else?
I guess I'll just keep that same theme, I, I'm just very proud to work with the seven of you. I, I mean, I think we have such a great, um, council that, you know, we, we, I don't know, I couldn't, I, I, I don't envy other cities where there's all kinds of drama and there's all kinds of, you know, things that we, we are making this city better, and we're all working together, we may not always have the same views on topics, but we certainly gather and appreciate every single one of you, and very much, uh, thankful for the staff we have, they make our job easy, and so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
This is Councilwoman Barajas, uh, thank you, um, echoing what everyone is saying. A special thank you to Angela for hand-delivering the packets, appreciate you very much, Angela.
Mr. Melody? Any last words?
Uh, that was all good, I really enjoyed the live etop, live, live, the topics and the discussion was really good. So, uh, I didn't have a lot to say, but, uh, you guys covered pretty much everything, so I really appreciate it, thank you.
All right, Mr. Sharona? Now we'll go through everybody.
Yeah, I'll just say, uh, wait till you see Pasco.
Awesome, okay, did I miss anybody? Did I get everybody? I think so, so, uh, well, council, once again, thank you very much, um, have a good evening, and it is now seven thirty-seven, and this meeting is now adjourned.